Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. You're here for a city council meeting and it is Monday, November 16th, 2020. And we'll start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Strowman.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Drew. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll have the invocation provided by Pastor Randy Phipps, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
...for our city on a regular basis privately. We're praying publicly today. Thank you for joining in as we ask the Lord's blessing, knowing that we're not alone in this and we're better together. So Father, I thank you today. Thank you for this opportunity that we have. We look at it with expectation and anticipation, Lord God, that you would be pleased with what you see, with what you hear, and what we do, with what we've been given, Lord God. Let us be responsible, Lord God. Thank you for these leaders in our city, Lord God, that are stepping out, that are coming to the plate, so to speak, or looking to do your work. And we pray, Lord God, for these citizens and for the community in general, Lord God, and as a whole, that you would bless us, that you would find in us, Lord God, the kind of people, Lord God, that are not at animosity and not an enemy of you, but we're in agreement. So thank you for what's happening and transpiring here tonight. May you bless it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance...
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now we have a bonus item on the agenda tonight where we get to swear in our newest elected council member, Ron Wyffenbach from Ward 1. And we'll have the city finance director come forward to administer the oath.
I state your name. Solomon, swear.
That I will support and defend. That I'll support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear due faith?
That I'll bear due faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations?
Without any mental reservations.
Or for the purpose of evasion?
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office of Ward...
The duties of the office of Ward 1 Alderman.
Rapid City Council.
Rapid City Council.
Rapid City Council.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wyffenbach takes a seat on the dais for the third time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. This is where the council may adopt the agenda as written, or they may make alterations to it. Motion to adopt by Solomon and a second by Jones. All in favor of adoption of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we have a presentation, item two on the agenda is a presentation on the downtown ambassadors program, Dan Sefner and Manny DeVilla.
I'm Dan Sefner, president of Destination Rapid City. And the ambassador program, I know many of you or all of you have seen them downtown over the years. We started this in 2019. This was not an idea that was new to us. It was something that we had looked at and watched in other communities. We're not that smart, you know? We don't have to invent it all ourselves, in other communities over the years. I was fortunate enough that Manny was available to manage and run this program. This is eyes and ears on the street on a daily basis. The first year, we went like three months. This year, we went four months. There's several different funding vehicles that we can talk about as to what we have done in the past to make it work. It's comfortable. It works. People are out there. It's eyes and ears on the street that aren't typically there, and it's people paying attention to what's going on. I'm gonna have Manny give a brief review of what he sees. He's the one on the street every day. He's the one out there. It isn't me. He reports to me all the time. We talk all the time. And I tease him a lot, because Manny likes to talk a lot. And this is a job for Manny that fits pretty good. And people are comfortable. So I want to bring Manuel DeVilla up to the mic.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, council, mayor, citizens of Rapid City. I'm the supervisor of the ambassadors downtown. Been doing this for two years. In our first year, we had a very successful summer. We had over 35,000 visitors. Of the 35,000 visitors, we had all 50 states representative and 32 countries came. This year, with the COVID-19, it came down to about 18,000 people. We had all 50 states represented this year. We had four people from Israel, Canada, but they were stuck here because they got... with any trouble. The President wouldn't let them fly out. But we had, like, the first year, we had five employees working for me. We walked the streets from Main Street, Kansas City Street, St. Joe Street, from East Boulevard to West Boulevard. Then we cut it down from Fifth Street to Eighth Street, because there's where most of the people gather. We've had all kinds of questions asked for to us about where the restaurants are, the movie theaters, the malls, and where Mount Rushmore is, which they don't know yet. But this has also been a very good, successful year. This year, we only had three employees because of, like I said, COVID, we cut down. But the main questions asked by a lot of the visitors are, the five main ones are, where's their closest grocery store, which we don't have downtown? They're looking for that. And a pharmacy, which we don't have downtown yet. And they ask where the most popular places downtown are. I'll give you the top three. Prairie Edge, Main Street Square. And this year, for some reason, the gun shop made the top three. I don't know why, but I guess that's what it is. Everybody who works for me are elderly, little older than me, but everybody likes us. We talk to all our people. We see a lot of things. If anything goes wrong, like I said, we are the ears. We do have a contact with dispatch. If there's something going wrong, we'll contact people. But everybody that I've talked to, they love us. People from Sioux Falls wish they had an ambassadorship, just to let you know. We're the best in South Dakota with the ambassadorship. We have people from all over asking us, when can we start a program? How can we start a program? So they call Dan, and Dan tells them a little bit about it. But thank you. If you have any questions for us, let me know. I can answer them, or Dan can answer them. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Manny. And for one of you guys, when's the next time you plan on starting back up? Or what are the future plans?
I would say, you know, it's almost like summer right now, but we talked about, Manny and I talked about next spring. Memorial Day weekend's typically a startup, and then possibly go through October. This year, we went to the middle of October. We scaled things back. We gotta go back to one thing. Guess what? Everything costs money. Where does the money come from? How are you gonna fund this program? These people aren't doing this as a volunteer. You can try that, but they won't last. It changes quickly. I mean, in 2019, just to give you an idea, we spent roughly 18,000 on the ambassador program. That money came from Destination Rapid City, the Business Improvement District, and Visit Rapid City. That's where the funding came from to kickstart it. In 2020, City put up 10,000. Parks and Rep put up 5,000. We had South Dakota Area Community Foundation put up 4,000, and Destination Rapid City. So we had enough to carry us through the year, and we actually have a little carryover of about $4,000 carrying over into next season. So Manny and I have discussed this. We really think it'd be best to have four staffed, plus Manny, that's five. Now you can rotate your week, because these are long days in the summer. These are things that take some time to put together. We were close with the PD. I mean, they train our staff as to how to handle when you get into a circumstance that's maybe not very comfortable. So they will do the training. They will tell our staff what to do. What we will get back for regular staff next year, I'm not sure. Do you know Manny yet?
As of now, it's just two of us.
As of now, it's two. But when we posted this position, it was easy to fill. It was easy to fill. People were like, yes, we love Rapid City. We're from here. We want to be here. So I figure if we fund this position, the money that we would need for the entire year of 2021 is roughly 30, 28 to 30, to fund the five people. We have to insure them. We pay the tax. We pay the insurance. They work out of our office. They work with us. Manny puts together their schedules, when they're in, when they're not, when they go, when they come. It's a business, like you guys all know. It just doesn't happen by itself. It's something we have to schedule and put together and make it work. And I'm very thankful that Manny was available to do it. And he also told me he'd be available next year. So that's where it sits.
Great. Well, thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Any other questions from the council members? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we would normally do general public comment. We don't have any general public comment forums. We'll go on to non-public hearing items, items three through 37. We have typically open public comment for items three through 28, and there are no speaker requests for that. There is a speaker request for item 37, which we'll get to shortly. So consent items, items three through 28. Oh, wait. This just in.
Newsflash.
Okay, we do have some general public comments. We're gonna go backwards on the agenda just a little bit. The first one is Billy Brown. And if you'll watch up here, all the speakers tonight have three minutes, and you can watch these lights to see how you're doing.
I'm here on that land swap that Ari's talking about. The people that started this, they didn't let the Indians of Rapid City know. That's where everybody's upset at, is they should've told all of us what they were doing. They never put it out there. Now there's a commercial out there with little kids telling us what to do. You guys are gonna bring in these little kids and have them tell you guys what you're doing? That commercial's embarrassing. Those are little kids that they have up there trying to tell us to do something this important. This is very important to us Indians, because we never had anything. We have it, and they take it away from us. And now they want to swap it for this and that? We need to really sit down. We need our BIA or whoever up here with us to talk us through this. Right now, it's just like, okay, $20 million? Yeah, that's a lot of money for some people. And where are those people at that started this? Nobody's here to talk to us about any of this, and everybody's gonna write out these proposals and we're gonna believe them? No, we need all of the Indians' input on this. And for one, myself, I speak only for myself. I do not want to switch that land. I don't want no money for that land, because it's the only thing that any of us Indians have left here. Look what they did to our Susanne. They tried to move our Susanne to, out by Menards. We finally got that stopped. Now they're up there and they're tearing down, they're digging up, up there, and I don't know if you guys know about this, but there is bodies up there. And nobody's pinpointing where those bodies are. But we got people up there digging it up, knocking down the water tower, and they're just upruting us. And now this here land, we're gonna go back to this again? You guys need to give all of us Indians a chance to put in our own input. These people that started this, where are they at? Where's their commercial at? Why ain't they out here telling us what's going on instead of telling us what they're gonna do? And where's that hether at? Where's their lawyers at? Where's these people at that started this? We all knew we owned land here. We all knew that. And now they're in here and they're gonna get $20 million from you guys and switch our land? How come we can't have our land back? What's wrong with us having our land back? I don't understand this, and there's a lot of us out here that don't. We have kids. We have grandkids. We have great-grandkids that are growing up in this city. What are we gonna leave them if we keep swapping for whatever? Nobody's telling us why they're even trying to do that. There's enough land out there for us to build out there, too. Because if we keep doing this, we're gonna get it where we gotta pay taxes on it, and we are gonna lose it. As long as we keep it where it's at in the BIA, the way it is, we won't lose it. We could build out there. But nobody wants that. Everybody wants money. So you guys need to get with us Indians that were born and raised here and ask us about these things. You guys ain't, and we need to know. We need to know what you guys are trying to do with our land again. But nobody wants to tell us. We keep getting paperwork, but there's nothing with it. So you guys need to put it out there. They got a commercial out there, little kids telling us what to do. Why don't you guys put a commercial out there inviting all of us? None of you ever came to any of our meetings, and we've had meetings. We had meetings to fight for Susanne, and we had meetings over this land, but nobody came. Nobody came to any of our meetings. We got a council. All right, I went over. But yeah, so you guys need to let us know about this, because we're not trying to sell it. We're not trying to give it away.
Okay, thank you, Billy. The next speaker request is, sorry about this. Last name, Goss.
I came here for a different matter, but I thought since I was here, I might as well do what I'd like you guys to know. I watch you on YouTube. I love it. I wish that you would open YouTube for comments. I think you guys are awesome. You, Darla, remind me so much of me, because she is our digger on this panel. She is going to find out every nook and cranny. Ron, I've known you for years. I've watched you for years. But I also have to tell you that I'm a degenerative brain disease specialist, so I'm probably one of the most boring people you'll ever meet. But I do enjoy watching. I wish our conferences, our mayor conferences, were not so audibly deficient. Sometimes I turn it on. I'm so happy that you're in conference and I don't get to hear it. So I do have to apologize to your secretary, Mayor. I called you, and you addressed me many times with the swim center. I begged to open that swim center for COVID. We did find, if it helps any, that the high humidity does make the SARS-2 virus droplets drop within a foot. So if only we could all live in Waterworld, we could maybe get rid of the masks. And I also told your secretary every time I called that I pray that you will run for governor, Mayor Alder. We need somebody with more than one synapsis going on. And I will support you 100%. I pray you will run for governor. And that's really all I had to say, and I thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is Tim, is it Hughes?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I still further me speak? I just had a couple of questions with the Amendment A and Measure 26.
You can take down your mask.
Passing. Sorry if you can't hear me. I was just seeing what you guys were gonna do for the zoning and if you're gonna allow cultivation in town, that kind of thing is what I'm looking at, trying to figure out. I know it's very early on, and I'm sure you have no answers to these questions, but I'm just kinda trying to get it out there just so I can see what's gonna happen when it does take place.
Yeah, well, you're correct. We have no answers today. The South Dakota Municipal League will be calling a group together here. I think they meet in the next couple of weeks to start from a city level, but this is really all on the state legislature. So keep your eyes and ears open.
Yeah, I was watching the Department of Health website. I was just kinda seeing, because I know each city can do their own thing, so I was just kinda gauging on what you guys were planning on. So that's all I had.
All right.
Nothing too huge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that will be all our speaker requests under general public comment. So back to consent items, then consent items three through 28. And the council can approve all of these items at once, or pull off items to be discussed individually. And we'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 26, 27, and 28, please.
Okay, any others from the council? If not, can we have a motion to?
Number 20.
Number 20? Okay. Any others from the council? If not, could we have a motion then to approve the consent with the exception of 20, 26, 27, and 28?
27.
Motion by Armstrong and a second by Lehman for approval of consent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 20. Authorize staff to advertise for bids for downtown lighting project for an estimated Bill Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak. At the meeting, the work session last Tuesday, I brought up this particular project because I'm a little concerned about it being obsolete before it's actually built. I did send some articles out to members of the council so they could educate themselves as to what's going on. My concern is that if we buy fixtures that are not all containing an IP address, we're limited in the future as to what we're gonna do, and being that it's an every 30-year project to replace the lighting, I was concerned that we'd lock ourselves into a sort of a closed-ended project that's going to not allow the city to move ahead with smart fixtures and smart, basically, infrastructure that allows us to save really millions of dollars over the course of this lifespan of the units that they're installing. Now, I did meet today with Mr. Sefner, who's driving the project, and the man at Skyline, I can't think of his name now, who did the project. And I was assured that the particular lighting fixtures they're installing, when it comes time and when the bid comes in, there's a chance, if it comes in under budget, there's a chance we could actually substitute and include some of these features that I'm concerned about. Now, if each fixture is accessible by its own IP address, you can allow dimming, shutting off light shows, but more importantly, the ability to incorporate emergency lighting, for instance, an ambulance going down the street. You can program the lights to show which direction that ambulance is traveling. Other features you can incorporate, you know, emergency things, flood warnings, tornado warnings. You know, with people having headphones on all the time, there are a lot of times they're not hearing what's going on, and that could alert them to do such things. Other features you could have are proximity sensors, for instance. Take the lights on Kansas City Street, which everybody knows is overlit. That could be much dimmer with the pedestrian scale lighting way, way down. As a person approaches, that light comes up. You can always see if there's somebody in the area, or as you're driving down the street, the lights get brighter, there's a deer. All of a sudden, that fixture ahead of you flashes on full intensity to let you know there's something ahead. So it's a safety thing. Now, evidently, the budget does not include this now, but there's a chance we can do it, and I was assured by Mr. Sefner and by the Skyline people that these fixtures with control unit, we could substitute that portion of it in the future. I think it's important, though, that we go ahead with the project, and I'm not gonna resist it tonight, because the main portion of it is the infrastructure that's underground, the poles and everything else. When we get to the actual fixture itself, there's a chance we could investigate this further, and if it comes in at a point where we could afford to add some of these features, move us into the 21st century, because I know cities like Bozeman, Fort Collins, other places are doing it. I think ahead. Mr. Teck, you know, he's our lighting director now. I don't know if he's gonna work for 30 years or not, but I would assume the next person that replaces him would like to have access to these features. And so it's important we don't lock them out for 30 years. So I just wanted to say I'll go ahead and support this tonight, but with the understanding that when the bids come in, we're gonna review them and see if we can afford to add some of these features to it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Dan Sefner, please. I have a couple of questions for him. Thank you, Dan. Where exactly are these lights? I know where they are, but there's probably a lot of people watching that don't know where these lights are gonna be installed.
Well, as you take a look at the lighting, I actually started on this project over five years ago. Many of you might remember that, probably almost seven. There's been a lot of checking, a lot of taking a look, a lot of what we can do and so forth and so on. As you take a look at the lights that'll go up and down, Main and St. Joe, now, we did Phase 1. Phase 2 adds poles in between. When I had the Vision Fund Committee, the vision is what's funding this. the vision is what's funding this. When we had the Vision Fund Committee, I had them come downtown to our boardroom at 4:30, quarter to 5:00 in the afternoon. We did a walk east of Fifth. The gals that were with us looked at me and said, you've got to be kidding me. This is what we have in our downtown. It was almost shocking. So phase one went rather smoothly because we used a lot of the existing areas. Phase two, and we will handle this through Destination Rapid City as far as updates, adds poles, quite a few poles. Will you see one light, go straight across the street, you're going to see another one. Will you see a light that's up now, go straight across the street, you're going to see another one. I look at the advancement as to what's going on from East Boulevard to West Boulevard with School of Mines, with the ascent building coming up, with all the development, talking about east of Fifth. Councilman Evans talks about the future, and I agree with him. That's what, where all of this has started, is going to the future. This is where we need to go. We need to level the lighting out. We need to talk about where it is. The heads can be adaptable. We need to see where things go. If we stop, we stop.
You know, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this. You know, yeah, it's great to talk about the future, but women need this now. You know, when we're out walking in this area that we're developing and saying to people that we really want east of Fifth to be the place to grow and go, and the lots are affordable and we can develop there, women need it now. This is not something we can put off to the future. And as far as like having lights change and have your cars stop and all those kinds of things for deer or somebody in the street, I think the automobile industry is heading towards that faster than a lighting is. So I would not have any problem saying yes to this at this time. I think that, that car technology will overcome these problems. And, and as far as safety for our citizens, I can't, I can't get this fast enough. So thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Darla.
Jason Solomon.
Make a motion to approve if I can get a second and retain the floor.
Second by Armstrong, go ahead.
Dan, thanks for all your work. I have no question for you.
Thank you, Jason.
Bill, I always appreciate Bill thinking ahead, which is great. We should be innovative. Innovation always has, you always have to make a decision at some point, knowing that in a year from now, everything changes and what we do, even that technology, probably five years from now will be antiquated to whatever the next is. So I hate to get, not do what we need to do now because of what's going to come next. Sometimes we have to keep moving forward. So I appreciate you asking those questions and doing your research. Appreciate the five years of research and, of course, the hundreds of years you're, you've been working on downtown. I mean, decades, I didn't mean to call you old. Hundreds of years. But all that to say, I don't want to, I don't want to get what's next, get in the way of what's now. So let's go ahead and get this done. Thank you.
Bill Evans.
I did want to add one thing. This is one phase. We're going to be replacing these fixtures downtown, but look at the rest of the city. That's all coming up. And if we can somehow pilot this and get this technology started, it's going to result, if we do it right, in savings of millions of dollars over the next 20, 30 years, not just, you know, like four, five, I mean, tens of millions of dollars, because it gives you the, the ability to pick and choose where the lighting is really necessary. So got to start someplace. I agree with Darla. We need to go get it going, but let's keep our eye on the prize. The prize ultimately are all those thousands of lights in the rest of the city, and they're all coming up to being replaced. Let's not do the wrong thing. All right? Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval of item 20. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now on to item 26. Approve award of total bid for miscellaneous improvements projects, facility-type projects, boiler repurchase project, opened on November 10th, 2020 to the lowest responsible bidder, G and R Controls Incorporated, the amount of $277,600. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have absolutely no problem with any of these bids, but I wanted to comment. My colleague Darla Drew and I, when we attended the municipal league training back in the summer, one of the things that they talked about was to learn more about the bid process. And I spent a good part of a morning with Dale Teck and with Tracy Davis. They walked me through every step of the bid process, how everything takes place. And I can assure this board, our citizens, that we have amazingly professional people dealing with bids that the city handles. There are rules and regulations in place. There are proper procedures in place, and every, every step is followed by our folks. There's checkpoints along the way to make sure things are done correctly, and these people are very good stewards of our money. It's your money, it's my money, it's our taxpayer dollars, and whether it's a federal grant, a state grant, or tax, Rapid City tax money, it's our money, yours and mine. And you can rest assured that your, your people here who handle the bids and do the process are taking great care of our money. I was impressed by the process, by the diligence of it. The days of the good old boy and hey, I'm going to give you this project doesn't exist in Rapid City. It can't by law, and it doesn't because we have good people doing a great job. So that's why I wanted to comment on these, Mayor. Thank you, Dale, and all of our department heads and everyone involved, because you do a superior job, and our money is in very, very good hands. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion for item 26, please?
Who approves?
Motion to approve by Lehman, second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 27, approve award of total bid for two paratransit vehicles, open November 10th, 2020 to the lowest responsible bidder, creative bus sales in the amount of $188,128.
Who approves?
Who said that? Jones?
Who approves?
Motion by Jones to approve, second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 28, concur with the SD DOT Transportation Commission bid award at its regularly scheduled meeting on November 24th, 2020, and authorize a mayor and finance officer to sign a contract for La Crosse Street utility replacement, opened on November 4th, 2020, to the lowest responsible bidder, Complete Concrete, Doing Businesses, Complete Contracting, in the amount of $707,279.
Who approves?
You don't want a motion?
I want.
Okay, Darla Drew.
I would just like to piggyback on what Pat Jones said. These are the places that we learned at that municipal conference that people drop the ball. They don't look at these numbers. They're not looking at the budget. They're not looking at the bill list. And so Pat really dug into this and decided he wanted to know how this bidding was done, whether it should be done during our meetings, and took the extra effort to find out how it's done so that we could all feel better about that. And I want to thank Pat for that, and of course, all the staff as well, because this is, this is where you can drop the ball. This is where money gets lost. So thank you for doing that.
We had a motion for approval by whom? Was there a motion? Pat Jones, second? Second by Lance Lehman. All in favor of approval of item 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that'll bring us to the end of our consent items and now into non-consent items, 29 through 37. We'll open public comment on items 29 through 37, and we have one speaker request on item 37 from Troy Fairbanks.
My name is Troy Fairbanks. I live at 110 East Watertown. City Council, thank you for allowing me to have a moment of your time. I've spoken at a few of these meetings in the past, and I want to commend you, each and every one of you, for actually taking a look at what is right through city council. The only ones that have ever stood up for us, even even thought about talking about the Native Indian community, that is tremendous. As a Native person who was born and raised here, I was born at Bennett Clarkson Memorial, the hospital in question, at 7:04 in the morning in 1963. Whatever comes of this, I would like to be involved. Whatever comes of this, I'd like to help in any way I can. Whatever comes of this in your vote, it's for my grandchildren, it's for my children, my daughter who passed away in 2017, and I miss her dearly, her children, not only the Native community, but the non-Native community also. In our language, people, people nowadays, they say, "Wanxi chu" and that's not right, because we don't have, we don't have no words in our, in our language that say, that guy is a white man, that guy's a black man, that guy is this and that and the other. No, all we ever said was, "Wanxi i chupi." They came and took from the fat of the land. We don't have discrimination or racism. Education? We're very educated. People say, how in the heck can you allow this to, to go on? To someone to make a decision for you? I said, because they love us and they care about what happens to us because we're a part of the community in Rapid City. That's all. Our Native people, our tribes, they haven't spoken up for us. They haven't fought for us. Jesus, city council in Rapid City, they're fighting for us and they're speaking up for us, and they're saying, let's do something for the children.
You know what? I dressed up like this because I did this for you, to dress like this, tie and stuff, because of this. I want to give this to you, and I know what that little light is. But traditionally, I'm only supposed to sing it three times through, but I'll do that later. I want to give this to you because it's who you are, each and every one of you. That's an old song that they hardly sing anymore. It's for warriors. Women are warriors. Men are warriors. And it's this. I wish our elders were alive so we could see it. Old song that they hardly ever sing. But it's for you, warriors. Way ya ya ho, way ya ya ho, way yo, way ya ya, way ya, way ya, heh yo, way eh ya heh yo. Togga shela ya pe, tavak pahakayon, houweyokeeshne, wiyonajikteyon, wiyoglakeha, hoyatekeha ho, plechachasiktauchao, blechamuweloyo, way eh way ya, way eh yo. I want to tell each and every one of you in this room, never have our people been helped like this in many years. There was our people who were marched from standing rock down to wounded knee with five Hodgkin's machine guns, motors down, and they massacred our people. Those were white people. The people, the Blackfoot people, the little children were maybe run out into the field while they took practice on them, and they shot them down with guns. It was in this state, in the state hospitals, where many people, our people, died because of what you decided for all of us to come together to be one. No more racism, no more hatred towards us. We're human beings, while we're educated. I speak English. Ani and Bujuniji, I also speak Chippewa. Lakolea Waglakayomaskala, I also speak Lakota. And I would be honored here in the city council, speak for my rights and my treaty and my children. Thank you so much, city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. That'll close the public comment period, and we'll start back on the agenda under ordinances with item 29. Item 29, approve second reading of ordinance number 6447, an ordinance to amend section 8.08.070 of the Rapid City Municipal Code to clarify inclusion of solid waste charges in the utility rate relief program. Motion to approve, or motion to approve by Drew and second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 30, approve second reading of ordinance 6442, an ordinance to revise and clarify certain general provisions entitled 13 Public Utilities and Services by amending chapter 13.04 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Nordstrom.
Second.
Second by Drew. All those in favor of approval of item 30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 31, approve second reading of ordinance number 6443, an ordinance to revise and clarify certain provisions concerning the city's water service system by amending chapter 13.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Armstrong.
Never.
Second by Pat Jones. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 32, approve second reading of ordinance number 6444, an ordinance to revise and clarify certain provisions concerning the sewer service system by amending chapter 13.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Nordstrom.
Second.
Second by Lehman. All in, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I can't see anybody's mouth move, so I have to guess whose voice it was. Item 33, approve first reading ordinance 6449, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for James and Jamie Carpenter for rezoning request from Neighborhood Commercial District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Country Road and Haynes Avenue. Motion approved by Roberts, was it? And a second by Solomon. And all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now on to community development items. Item 35, a request by...
34.
Sorry, I was trying to do you a favor. At least someone's paying attention to the agenda today. Okay, I apologize. Item 34, approve first reading of ordinance number 6445, an ordinance authorizing the keeping of hens on certain residential properties in the city by amending section 6.08.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I'll go to Darla Drew.
You want me to talk first? Okay. Well, kind of putting up the white flag here. And, you know, because the support isn't here. But I do want to talk about this a little bit. I didn't do this for chickens. People ask me, why are you so passionate about chickens? I'm not passionate about chickens. I'm passionate about young people. And by young people, I don't mean children. I mean people under 40 that are living here that own homes and pay taxes. And they came to me wanting this. And the excuses I heard from people that said, oh, I would... And the excuses I heard from people that said, "Oh, I would vote for that, but only old people vote. Young people don't vote." Okay, so young people don't have a voice to you. So you're not going to vote for this. Also, I heard, "I'm not willing to stir things up." And you know how that goes on council. If you're not willing to stir things up, then you probably are in the wrong job. And then also, I heard, "I would get killed in my bed if I voted for this." That's a bit dramatic, but that's what I heard. So what you're saying to me, basically, other people on the council that didn't vote for this is, you didn't trust the people that showed up. Meeting after meeting, we saw these people show up this summer in the midst of COVID. They were here. They were always talking to you guys about why they wanted them, but you didn't believe them. The research done by Ken and Joel, Ken Young from our Community Development Office, we started working on this last January. Joel Landine, our attorney, he also worked on it as well. But I guess you didn't, didn't like the research that was done by them or believe it. The work I did on dispelling the myths, which I did. You know, there wouldn't be an influx of lots of predators. The predators are here more for your garbage than they are for chickens. And that is a proven fact. No one in your neighborhoods knows what six chickens smell like. Because we've never had an ordinance. They don't know what they're like. They don't know what the sound they make. Because we don't have an ordinance. We've never had them here. Okay? If they do, if they live by illegal chickens, okay, maybe they know. But actually, they don't. They remember what happened on their grandparents' farms. And that's what they're telling you right now. They don't want the smell because they remember the ammonia smell from their chickens at their grandparents' farms and the messes from the chickens at their grandparents' farms. And frankly, grandparents' farms didn't really care about smell. They were there to produce eggs. They might have cleaned those coops twice a year, if that. The young people I know really wanted this. And they pay taxes and they're here and they do vote. You've got a letter from the 4H, you've got a letter from the City Youth Council. The younger people want this stuff. And if we don't listen to them, we will lose them. And I'm not kidding. You know, I mean, you, you tell me, what have we done for them lately? Civic Center? Okay, I think that's kind of for everybody. But I am, I'm really, really feeling kind of left out in the cold because of this. And I think if your younger selves could talk to you, I don't think they'd say, "Hey, you know, you really just kept the status quo. It didn't cause any problems. You just kind of skated along and you made sure every old person got a vote." I don't think they'd be proud of that. I know my young person wouldn't be. And that's why I'm doing this. But now, white flag. I'm, I'm going away. I'm taking this. I'm, I'm not going to bring it up. If I go back and make some changes and if you guys want to reach out to me and say, "Darla, if you just change what you want for people that would say yes to this because they have the neighbors say yes." If you want to say that to me and you'll work with me, I'll bring it back. But otherwise, you know, we've got really, really big issues on our, on our plate. I think keeping young people is a really big issue. And I'll still work with them whenever, whatever the chance comes up. Whether it's a new concert venue down at the Band Shell, whatever they need, I'm going to be there for them. But, you know, this, I'm not going to like die on this sword again. I just can't. So do what you will, but this, this is just going to be something that'll go away from me for a while.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to table this item.
Okay, we have a second by Lance Lehman and there's no discussion on a tabling motion. We go straight to a vote. So all in favor of tabling this item, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The motion is tabled. All right, now on to community development items. Item 35. A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Michael and Marnie Gould, Stuart Rice, Ross and Angela McKee for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots A through D of Skyline Ranch subdivision number two, generally described as being located at 1850, 2300 and 2221 Skyline Ranch Road. And there's a recommendation stating that the applicant has requested that the item be continued to the December 7th, 2020 city council meeting. Motion by Armstrong and a second by Strowman. To continue this item to December 7th. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 36, alcohol beverage license application renewals. There's exactly 100 of them under item 36. We've gotten the clean bill of health from the RCPD as far as honorary license holders or anybody needing special attention. So would there be a motion? Motion to approve by Armstrong and a second by Lehman. All in favor of approving these 100 licenses, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 37 under Mayor's Items. Approve Resolution Number 2020-084, a resolution to resolve three outstanding deeds related to the Rapid City Indian Boarding School lands. And this item was continued from the November 2nd, 2020 city council meeting and we'll start by going to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, first of all, I may make a motion to approve the resolution to resolve three outstanding deeds related to the Rapid City Indian Boarding School lands. There is no title for or number for this resolution number, but if I get a second, I'll retain, like to retain the floor.
A second by Darla Drew. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If the council needs a little bit more time, I will entertain a motion to recess so you get a chance to review this item for further discussion. But if I may present, and there'll be much more eloquent speakers than I will be able to address this issue.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Yes.
I believe, just for clarity's sake, you're proposing approval of a, of a, an alternative resolution that you handed out to council members tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And that's why there's no number on that resolution? Okay. Continue, please.
Thank you. And thank you for the clarification. There's three items that I want to address off of this no-number resolution as an amendment. I've been working with Heather Don Thompson quite a bit over the weekend and we've been able to settle on several things. And I want to applaud and thank several people that were involved with coming up with this substitute resolution. In my mind, Alderman Strowman did the heavy lifting to come up with this resolution. And we were able to have some agreements and disagreements and, and primarily what we came up with is the use of the word swap doesn't exactly identify what the intent of this resolution does. And so Ms. Thompson and I came up with a, an understanding of what the word exchange means. It should be in a proper order as to be a substitute for the exchange of the lands. We also worked up a hard date within this resolution of Jen, excuse me, June 30th, 2021. And the rationale behind that changing of date instead of using an arbitrary six months is to adopt, so the finance people can have a better chance of figuring out what the budget will be by the end of this planning session that is being proposed. So that's the second item. And then the third item was really kind of a lot of back and forth on this item and had to do with the $20 million number. Ms. Thompson was very concerned about if we put up to $20 million. She was concerned that it would be coming in at a lesser amount on that. And my concern was if we didn't put something in there with a different language in there, I would be concerned that the, the sky would be the limit after that. So we agreed that the, that we would come up with the hard number of $20 million. And that will be sent to the planning committee for further discussion. This is a tentative agreement between Ms. Thompson and myself right now. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review all of this. And, and again, like I said, there will be much more articulate speakers after me that will be able to dig down into the weeds of this resolution amendment. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield my time.
Okay. At this moment, we have a motion to approve the alternative resolution that's been handed out to the council tonight. There's been some changes having to do with subs, style and form. Any of the council have any comments or would, let's go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if I could ask Tatayi Means a couple of questions. She's in the audience tonight.
Sure you can, if she'd like to answer.
Tatayi, would you come up, please? Excuse me, I forgot the name of your counterpart.
Rebecca Kitter.
What's that?
Rebecca Kitter.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, so am I to understand that your group has seen this and approves of where we're going, at least this is a step in the right direction?
That's correct.
Do you have the list? I couldn't find it. I was just looking for it on my phone of all the groups that you have that have said they're going to work with you or supporting you on this because it was quite impressive.
Yes, we do. From those that were, that either spoke at the November 2nd council meeting or were committed to speak, but something came up. Would you like me to read those individuals?
Would you please?
Sure. We had several elders in the audience, but started the evening with Bev Warren, the Director of SDSU Native American Nursing Education Center. Dr. Eric Zimmer, professional historian. Myself, as a former Attorney General of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and current Executive Director of Thunder Valley Community Development Corporation, Rebecca Kitter, my colleague here tonight, who's partner and owner in Pebbles and Kitter. The Ava Nichols family, Eva Nichols family was represented, Chuck Nichols. Cecilia Montgomery family, Sioux addition descendants. They unfortunately weren't able to, not all of them able to make it, but had committed support, Tad Montgomery, Lissa Montgomery, Merle Leftenboll, Cheryl, Jeannie Castillo, Ashgash Camp descendants, Mary Bowman, Bree Jackson, Cheryl Angel, community elders and longtime residents. We had Bev Running Bear. She's with Black Hill State University, the Lakota Language Program. Dr. Art Zimaga, former Director of South Dakota Office of Indian Education. Marlis Minor, descendant of the Rapid City Indian Boarding School. Traditional speakers, we had Jean Tayon, Office of the Vice President of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Darryl Redcloud, Professor of the Oglala Kotta College. Housing and Unhoused Coalition, Lloyd Bigcrow, Oyate Ki, Chantae Washtepi and Anna LeBeau, Black Hills Community Loan Fund. COVID Meals for Relatives. Natalie Stites Means, former candidate for Rapid City Mayor. She was unable to make it that night, but supports the effort. Jean Roach, Community Relations. Karen Mortimer, Executive Director of Miniluza Hua, Okola Kichi, Okola Kichiapi ambassadors. The churches were represented by Pastor Eric Thone of South Canyon Lutheran Church. Cody Magnus, St. Andrews Episcopal and Cindy Rain, St. Andrews Episcopal. Chantae Hart, South Dakota Democratic Party and the current Native Outreach Field Director and former city council candidate. Walt Swan was unable to make it, but supports the effort. Rapid City Small Business Owner, former city council candidate. Youth were represented. Whitney Ren counter has expressed support with the Rural American Initiatives. Rapid City Youth City Council Cultural Advisory Committee. Kristin Keiner and Sean Binder are the advisors. Hannah Churchill, Ryland Barnett, Grace Dodd, Charlie Swan. The business community that we had represent Tom Johnson, the CEO of Elevate Rapid City. Bill May, Chamber of Commerce, former president. Brian Brewer, President of Lakota Nation Invitational, former president of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And the closing speakers were Professor Jace Decore from Black Hill State University and Robin Zephyr, Attorney of Zephyr and Leflore PC. We also have support of resolution recently. We were able to speak with Ochati Shakoi Treaty Councils. Their representatives of the Ihanktowah or the Yankton Treaty Committee, also the Black Hills Sioux Nation Treaty Council and the Sichangu Treaty Council. All expressed verbal support, but we were, we were able to get a written resolution, a documented resolution from the Sichangu Lakota Treaty Council. Those are our relatives on the Rosebud. But again, both the Black Hills Sioux Nation Treaty Council and the Ihanktowah Treaty Committee expressed support and resolutions are forthcoming. And then we also have the Land and Natural Resources Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is forthcoming with a resolution and support that will then go on to full council. So those are the, the current list of individuals and entities in support.
So it's not like you're operating independently, are you?
No.
Certainly sounds like you have a lot of tremendous support. So thank you, ladies. That's just all I needed. There might be further questions later.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really thrilled that Tatayi was here tonight to present that. I don't think I've seen her since she had a clarinet in her face about a long time ago at West Junior High. But anyhow, oh, two weeks ago, when we decided to table this for a couple of weeks, it was sort of becoming apparent that there was not a lot of consensus within the community we were trying to help. But maybe this is proving that that was not the case. And so I'm really thrilled that we're seeing people coming together. I think the council that you have in front of you is capable of passing a resolution to start this process and make it really go someplace wonderful. Mr. Jones and I, you know, we've spent a lot of time driving students across the state. And when you say, "Where do you want to stop and eat?" You know, the seven kids in the back of the suburban are all going to want something differently. And so we always say, "We're going to Pizza Ranch and you're going to figure it out there." Well, now we're at the point, we can come to the table. We're going to be, we're going to Pizza Ranch and we're going to figure out what works for everybody and let everybody have what they need to satisfy their hunger. And I'm just really excited for tonight. I think this is a great moment. And if we can get this passed tonight, I think it's sort of momentous what we could accomplish. And I do think the sky is the limit for this because I think we willingly have community support, state support. I think we're going to get national support. So whatever we do, don't set our sights too low. You know? Shoot for that and maybe we can really have something tremendous to show for the future. Thank you.
Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. So last weekend on public broadcasting, South Dakota Public TV, they had some excellent programs for Native American History Month that they're celebrating on public TV. And one of the shows was about, it was called Warrior Women. It kind of chronicles some Native American women activists. Had pictures of the boarding school in Rapid City. It showed footage from AIM and Wounded Knee and Dakota Access, all these places where these Native Warrior Women had come to fight for their heritage. And they were proud women of courage and honor and integrity. And I think we've seen some of that in the last couple of weeks here. I see that tradition carried on by some of the women that have come up here and spoke and have spoke, spoken on behalf of their position, whether they are in the position that was initially brought or whether they were the other people that came in and argued against moving forward with this. I think it took a tremendous amount of courage for those few that came to that first meeting and stood amongst several others in their community and said, "No, we don't agree with you." And I wanted to have an opportunity to let us hear from everybody that's involved in this before we move forward. And that's not to say that there aren't warrior men that have been, we've seen that too. But I think, I think it's just. But I think it's just... It's quite... I want to thank those people who have come and spoken on this. It's been quite an education for me. And it's really encouraging to see people get involved with that kind of passion. I think what I... I'm kind of a bottom-line guy. And I thought that the bottom line here was a good bottom line. And that is to come up with a way, a coalition, to fund and to build a cultural heritage center that honors the Native Americans right here in Rapid City. I think our entire community, our state, our nation could benefit from something like that. But in addition to the way that the... I didn't know that we were hearing from everybody that had a part in this. I also became a little bit concerned about the process and how the wrongs that may or may not have been that were probably perpetrated upon some of the Indian boarding school children, how that became a vehicle to impose upon the city of Rapid City, which didn't run the Indian boarding school lands. And I think that the city of Rapid City and the occupants or the users of those particular parcels that we're talking about have done everything appropriate, according to the law, in their use of the land. And so I didn't want to use that as a means of getting to the end that we're trying to get to here. I think if there were any violations, we'd have known about it by now. I wanted the Department of Interior and the BIA to be involved in this because the statute says that they're the ones that are managing this property for the United States government. And if there are violations of the statute, that it would revert to the United States government. It would not divert to some special interest groups. And I don't believe that we've got enough involvement from the Department of Interior. And finally, I don't like the idea of burdening the taxpayers of Rapid City with a specific number at this point in the process. I would like to see us move forward, as we have already for the last several years, apparently, trying to negotiate some sort of a situation where we can achieve the goal that we want, which is this cultural heritage center. But I think it's a mistake to put a number in there at this point. I think that has to be worked out by the committee. Thank you.
Okay, Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. On July 1st, 2003, I became the principal at Central High School here in Rapid City. And one of my top priorities was to improve the relations, the educational process and system for our Native American students. They were easily the least served and least achieving group in Rapid City. And we needed to do something to reach them. Central High School had 22, 2,300 students when I was principal there. We were the eighth-largest city in South Dakota, which brought many, many, many unique challenges. I met with many, many grandmothers, mothers, fathers, kids. What can we do to take better care of our Native American students? And we did many, many things. So I say that because I care deeply about this. And it's time. It's time to do something. We've arrived at this point, and it's time to take the next step. The gentleman who spoke earlier said, "Wow, Rapid City Council, are they the ones that are going to do something?" Yes, we are. We're going to do something. Whether it's this or something else, it's time for us to do something. My concerns that still exist at this time is we appear to be conceding that Monument Health Behavioral Center, Clarkson Healthcare, and West Hills Village and Canyon Lake Activity Center are using the land illegally. I don't know that this is the case. This is the opinion of this resolution, but it is not in fact. It is not an item of fact at this time. The $20 million, as my colleague, Mr. Strowman, said, also concerns me. As stewards of the people's money, to commit to giving $20 million to something that at this stage is very ambiguous, and we still don't know what this group has standing to bring this forward, makes me very uncomfortable. If this was a land-only issue, I could probably support it and wrap my head around it and believe in it. But I'm not sure where the desire for the $20 million comes from and what we're going to do about that. There are people and groups behind this that are in direct conflict with the city's current efforts to improve relations in our Native American community. So for us to fund something like that is troublesome to me. And yet, I still believe we need to do something. And this may be it. My concerns are my concerns. I've talked with a lot of people about this. And these are the things that continue to pop up. As the future chairman of the Steve Allender for Governor campaign, I very much appreciate what the mayor has done and others in working on this for the four, five, six years. When the mayor explained it to me, he said, "It's a combination of items that are on the record as far as what has taken place to the land and things over the years, and a large dose of good faith effort to move something forward that isn't black and white." Because there are some ambiguities in it, standing. Do I keep coming back to that? Yes, I do. So perhaps we have to take the good faith effort and move forward. Perhaps we can't. And I don't know if I'm at that stage or not. I know that a lot of my colleagues are. And if it's supported tonight, then I will be on board. But if I vote no, my no vote is based on these items specifically and not a desire to not want to support something like this. Because it is time. It's time that Rapid City made a move, a big move, a noticeable move, a recognizable, measurable move, to do something for our Native American community. And I want to be part of that, and it needs to happen. I just don't know if this, as presented to us, is exactly the right thing for us to do right now. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask City Attorney Joel Landine just a procedural question, please?
Of course.
Joel, I was just curious because this copy of this resolution just came through today. And it was never put on tonight's agenda. And I know that we have a group out there that says they are going to fight this. Is this going to cause any problems if this comes across the council tonight and we vote on it because of the fact that it wasn't noticed? And they could turn around and say, you know, open meeting violation, something to that effect?
I don't think it could be... I don't think there's a legal issue with it. It's not an open meeting violation. This item was on the agenda for discussion. And you always had the ability to amend the resolution. So anyone that was interested in it had the opportunity, knew it was going to be discussed, and that it should know that it could be amended. It's up to, I think, the group to decide whether or not you want the community to see the entire resolution before you vote on it. You know, in reality, I think this version is pretty similar to the original. There's some tweaks to it. But essentially, it's pretty much follows the original resolution. So it's not like you're going off and doing something different. But unlike an ordinance, if you make a major change to an ordinance at second reading, you would have to continue it. But with a resolution, that isn't the case. So no, I don't believe there's a legal violation if you approve this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Joel. That makes me feel more comfortable. Even though I do think that if we're going to bring this forward, we should give the public the opportunity to see what we're actually bringing forward. I'm a lot more comfortable with this draft. You know, again, if it comes forward and we vote on it tonight, I will probably support it. But I would be a lot more comfortable knowing that there's a group out there that's going to come forward and say, "Well, we did not see this." And I would just like to see it come forward where we could notice this, where people would have time to look at it. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor here is to approve. Jason Solomon speaking. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, if... I'm sorry, could you come up to the podium? I just want to get some clarifying questions before we take any action. So we received some revisions. And to make sure that I'm clear, and so the public was clear, first of all, this resolution... And if you could keep them... The answer is kind of brief, just because we've talked about this quite a bit. This resolution would need the DOI approval before... Once we get a coalition, we have a draft plan together, it would need the Department of Interior's approval before anything is done. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is not a final deal.
So we'll get the proper approval from the right stakeholders. I talked with my hands, and I got these around me. Two, and my biggest question mark on the resolution was that these three parcels were being used improperly by the city of Rapid City. From what I'm reading out of here, that actually, we've kind of taken out that it is not being used for municipal... Because the allegation is that it's not being used for municipal, educational, religious purposes, or for the National Guard. I'm seeing strikeouts on here that kind of eliminate that kind of allegation. Is that true, or am I misreading this?
Well, I would defer to Alderman Nordstrom. But yeah, I believe some of that... Some of the language... I mean, the reality is the allegations are subject to debate. And the legality of the claims, I've provided you an opinion. You've obviously heard from the Indian Boarding School Group on their opinion.
Right.
I think the best is that those claims are litigated. So since that was causing some issue, I think that language was definitely, from my reading, toned down in this draft.
Because to be very clear, Canyon Lake Activity Center, that land did not belong to the city of Rapid City. It belonged to Rapid City Area Schools, which is a separate legal entity, behavior health. We actually own the land currently. We lease it out. Could be considered municipal use. And Clarkson, as well, could be considered municipal use. So that's, I think, a big part for me is just, will we have a clear title? If we approve this resolution and work on a plan, do you know if that will result in there will be no future disputes on these three parcels? Assuming that the Department of Interior is on board?
Assuming that the Department of the Interior approves any agreement, they're going to have to sign off on it. Yes, the ultimate goal would be for all of these parcels to have clear title.
Very good. And then the valuation, you know, which is up, you know, $20 million, which is based on three parcels in question. I assume we have not determined a funding source for this yet. And so that is part of the plan to figure out. To be clear, if this goes through the vision fund process, it would go through the process just like everything else? Or would it automatically get funds? Anybody, maybe the mayor, can answer that question? Because I've heard vision funds being used.
I will answer it.
Okay.
This resolution does not commit you to use vision funds or bind you to approve any vision funds. I think the discussion of the vision funds has been, if this does require funding, that seems like, as far as a pot of money that isn't already allocated for other purposes, that that would be a likely source. It would ultimately be up to the council, although you have some ordinances in place on the process and how you want to handle that.
Okay. So really, this creates a path forward. Doesn't bind us to anything, but creates an opportunity for us to create a plan together with some of these stated goals in mind, which I think the end result we really want. I want to be cautious that we be careful about taking responsibility for acting improperly because we even have parcels on here that have nothing to do with the city. However, the end goal can be a good thing. I think that that's good. So thank you for answering my call. I wanted to make sure we had all this information out there as we deliberate on this decision. I yield.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank the people that presented tonight. I don't think there's a government entity anywhere that can solve the wrongs that happened at that boarding school. And I want to acknowledge that, first of all. Secondly, coming in at the end of a... Which seems to be a long discussion. There's a lot of information pieces here and there. The one thing that's easiest to solve as a solution is to know what your end goal is. And now, sitting here and doing some of the prep work beforehand, I'm not sure that the end goal has been identified. If the end goal is to build a cultural center, I've sat on this council, like the mayor had mentioned, two other previous times. And both times, the council attempted at the times to look at cultural centers. And for whatever reasons, they fell apart. So for anybody to indicate that nothing's been done or is being done or has been done is inappropriate and incorrect. It has been done. It has been attempted. If that's a goal, I think that's a whole separate issue than what we resolve here. The other thing that I caution people on is the expectations of what this resolution does, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to ask our council a question.
Yes, please.
Mr. Landine, the question I would pose to you is that this is a resolution, okay? There's no clear goal here on the resolution. What commitment does that give to this council and future councils? Is this a commitment that this is exactly what we're going to do? Or is this a commitment and a level that we're going to work together to try to find resolve on the issues of the three parcels that has been identified in here? They're clearly identified in here. And then I echo some of the comments of some of my council members up here. I mean, if we do a resolution that we can't resolve, it seems that we're going to have expectations that are unachievable. If we narrow this down to say, "We're going to work with the group to resolve that, revert the land back to the..." As this says here, to the Department of Interior or the BIA. Makes sense to me. That's a clear goal. If we're going to have a clear goal that wants to build a cultural center, which I hear or see on here, then that's another goal. So I guess my question to you, Mr. Landine, when the city council passes a resolution, can you give us the legal binding effect of that resolution? This one in particular? This for the public and for everyone in here to understand?
This is not legally binding. It is an intent to come up with, hopefully, an agreement that when we enter into it, will be legally binding. It outlines the parameters broadly. But yeah, we will need to come back with a specific plan and some specific proposals with dollar amounts and funding sources and, you know, plan or at least a general, more specific plan that outlines how we get from where we are now to that goal. Certainly, if it all falls apart, which is a possibility, then if the Department of the Interior or the Bureau of Indian Affairs, if we were to propose a plan and it was to be rejected, then I would say we're back at square one. And we're at where we're at right now without a resolution. With the resolution, I think at this point, was just that the group that had been working on this wants a statement of intent from the city council that you are willing to work on this and head in the direction that the resolution outlines and authorize basically the mayor and the staff to continue and to negotiate a more specific and detailed agreement to bring back to the council and the community for approval. But at the end of the day, I think the Indian Boarding School Group and I have acknowledged to all of you that this could always fall apart and that it does not guarantee an agreement.
That identifies my concern with this whole resolution. I'm a simple kind of guy. Simple solutions, simple goals. I still can't identify the goal. If the goal is to... If the goal is to identify how we get a clear title on the, on the, on the, on the land, I can simply understand that. If the goal is to build a cultural center, I could simply understand that. I supported it in the past on several occasions, because I think that one of the things that our, our community does lack is that cohesion through that part of the native culture that is so prominent in our community, probably one of the biggest areas of the country that doesn't even have that available. But as this is written, we're, we're, we're given an expectation that these people, that they're going to walk out of here and that they're going to get $20 million to, to do something with. Now, if we want to have a resolution that says we're going to work with them to, to resolve these land issues, I could, I could support that. But I guess I'm not sure what the goal is when I read this, this, and there's no legal binding authority to this, from, from this council to the next councils that move forward. So I, I would yield to my colleagues to help me get a better grip on that.
Okay, anyone else want to weigh in on this? Darla Drew.
I'll make this quick. Joel, we're working on a timeline imposed upon us by the DOI, is that right?
Uh, no, not, not really. I mean, this is, I think the group has been upfront, the Indian Boarding School Group, that they want a deadline or something, so this doesn't just continue to get kicked down the road. So they have asked for a deadline. At some point, the Department of the Interior would then have to make a decision if they wanted to seek revision. And I think this group is looking at, if we're not, if we're not going to move forward or we're not going to get something done, then they're going to either seek to have the Department of the Interior seek revision of these parcels, or they would try to initiate, I think, their own action.
Thank you for the clarification. I yield.
I've read the resolution. I've read the previous revolutions. And I believe this resolution acknowledges the, the historical issues with the property. And the goal of that resolution is to get a plan together of how we may resolve this, have a draft plan ready by the end of June 2021. That's the takeaway, is that the end of June 2021, we come back together and show our draft plan. That seems, that, to me, that's when the real hard decision-making and the critical analysis will be necessary. The general idea would be, when we get done with this meeting and I get back to work tomorrow morning, we would start to put together a working group of people who have the time and availability, the expertise to understand and absorb some of these issues and start trying to put one foot in front of the other to get a plan drafted. And so it'll take a little bit of an organizational startup to get the outline kind of defined, and then we'll start filling in the sections there. But that's how I see it, anyway. So the motion on the floor at this moment is to approve the alternative resolution presented by Richie Nordstrom, and we'll go to roll call vote on this issue. That was Jones. No.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Strowman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us on down to item 38, which is the bill list. And we would call upon the Finance Director, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list that, which is attached, so the total remains at $7,712,467.77.
Approved by Solomon, seconded by Jones. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are-